Good evening. Welcome to the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education Meeting of November 16th, 2015. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Centers.
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mrs. Laura.
Here.
Mrs. McDonald.
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. President Burton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Mrs. Laura, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Of course. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our meeting this evening. If you'd like to have an agenda to follow along, you'll find them on the table just outside our doorway. If you're watching from home, you can find our agendas on our website at www.livoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the School Board tab, you can drop down to Agendas and follow along right there. This evening's meeting is a regular meeting, or a voting meeting as we casually call it. What that means is that the items that are coming before the Board this evening have been before the Board for discussion typically twice, sometimes more than that, before they get to tonight. So you may or may not see the amount of discussion that you would expect on a given item. Please know that that is because it's been discussed at length likely twice already before this evening. If you're looking for more discussion on the items that come before the Board, I do encourage you to attend or tune into the Committee of the Whole Meetings. Those can be found on our website also under the Board tab for the dates of those meetings. The Committee of the Whole Meetings are here, they are also televised, they're open to the public, and those meetings are where we really have a lot of in-depth discussion on the items that come before the Board. Frankly, those are my favorite meetings because those are where we learn a lot more from one another. Typically, the Board will either send an item from the Committee of the Whole Meeting to a regular meeting for votes, or perhaps send it back to Administration for more information. But that is where you'll get a lot of information about the goings-on. This evening, you'll only see many items that will be voted upon and probably a little bit briefer discussion on each one. Let's see here. The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 3, Communications. First item is A, Art Gallery, and Mrs. Jenkins. Turn it over to you.
Good evening, President Burton, members of the Board, Mrs. Oakwist. Tonight, we're debuting our Student Art Gallery Program for the 2015-16 school year. As you know, the Student Art Gallery Program began three years ago as a way to recognize the artistic talents that are so abundant throughout our district. Each month, we'll feature a different school, and five students from that school will be selected to represent their art department. Tonight, we're recognizing five students from Franklin High School, which has a fairly large art department. I found out that not only is it led by Department Chair and Teacher Jeremy Rowe, who is also the boys' basketball coach, and he's regretfully unable to join us this evening as he kicks off his season tonight. So the art department at Franklin has 14 classes of drawing, painting, sculpture, advanced levels, and international Baccalaureate Visual Arts courses, all taught by Mr. Rowe, Tammy Hewittson, and Michelle Morton. Mr. Rowe is also the advisor for the National Art Honor Society. Tonight, each student, each of the five students selected will receive the following certificate, which reads, "Livonia Public Schools Certificate of Recognition, Student Art Gallery Featured Artist, Selected to Represent the Franklin High School Art Department at the Board of Education Office, November 16th, 2015." And now, I'd like to call each of our students to the podium to receive their certificate, and also to point out which piece of marvelous work is theirs. Okay? So first up, we have Matthew Bardell, who is a senior. Come on up, Matthew.
And parents, if you would like to move to a different location so you can photograph your student, you may feel free to do so.
There you are, and I'll have you stand here until we call all five up, okay? Next, we have Casey Bernhard. I'm sorry, Bernhard. There you are. Next, we have Lauren Forgus. I'm sorry, Casey is a junior, as well as Lauren. And Abby Jenkins, who is a junior, and also happens to be my daughter. Isn't that cool? There you go. And then finally Natalie Trucksell. And then, I'll start with Lauren. Lauren, which piece is yours?
This one.
Okay, so the upper right-hand corner, and is that, what type of a medium is that?
It is colored pencil.
Colored pencil, okay. And Natalie?
Mine is the ship.
Okay, pencil?
Yep.
Okay, pencil drawing in the middle. And Abby?
Mine's the charcoal in the top left.
Top left, charcoal drawing. And Casey?
Mine's the science one in the fire hydrant. The science one's colored pencil, and the fire hydrant's painting.
Okay, very cool. And Matthew?
Mine is the record player in the bottom left.
Process of elimination. Oh, that's a record player, okay. Very close-up view. Okay, well, thank you very much. Join me in congratulating these talented students from Franklin High School. Thanks for sharing your works with us, you guys. Your works will be on display for about the next month, okay? Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And as we've said several times, most of the folks in this room, and I put myself at the top of the list, couldn't begin to do what hangs behind us right now. So thank you so much for sharing your talents and brightening up our room with all of it.
Yeah, I should note that Abby does not get her artistic abilities from me. She barely do my name in bubble letters.
Thank you. We have two other items under Communications this evening, and after which, we're going to take about a five or 10-minute break to congratulate all of our artists. So if we can hang around for a few more minutes, we'll take a break so everyone can talk to them and kind of come up a little closer to see their works. The next item on our agenda is Item 3B, a gift from ProCam to Livonia Public Schools. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the generous gift of nine color printers from ProCam for a total estimated value of $8,991.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Jenkins.
Okay, thank you, President Burton. Tonight, I'm pleased to bring to you a very generous gift for formal acceptance and public recognition. A Livonia business called ProCam has donated a color printer, as you mentioned in the motion, to nine of our schools, and those lucky schools are Riley Upper Elementary, Emerson Middle School, Frost Middle School, Holmes Middle School, Churchill High School, Franklin High School, Stevenson High School, the Livonia Career Technical Center, and the Western Wayne Skill Center. The total for this very generous donation is again $8,991. And we've invited Mr. George McComer and Eric Hadad from ProCam to join us tonight so we can formally recognize them. And I believe we have George?
Yes.
George in attendance with us, and I'd like to, George was declining just to say any words this evening, but I wanted to have him come up anyway for our formal gratitude. So come on up, George. I promise I won't make you talk.
And if you need more, let me know. Thank you.
Okay, and that's all we have on this, and if you do have a resi...
We do have a motion.
A motion on the table, yeah.
Are there any questions or comments from Board members?
No, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And again, thank you very much for the generous donation. The next item on our agenda is Item 3C, American Education Week. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Johnson.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District designate November 16th through the 20th, 2015, as the 94th Annual Observance of American Education Week.
Support. We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mrs. Jenkins. Turn it over to you.
Thank you. Every year, our district, like those across the United States, recognizes American Education Week, which is designated for this year for November 16th through the 20th. This is the 94th Annual Observance. I thought it would be appropriate to include a bit of history about this important designation for you tonight. Back in 1919, the National Education Association was distressed that 25% of the nation's World War I draftees were illiterate, and 9% were physically unfit. The NEA teamed up with the American Legion to seek ways to generate support for education. In 1921, the NEA assembled in, in 1921, I'm sorry, at the NEA Assembly in Des Moines, Iowa, a designation was created to recognize one week each year to spotlight education, calling for, quote, "an educational week observed in all communities annually for the purpose of informing the public of the accomplishments and needs of the public schools, and to secure the cooperation and support of the public in meeting those needs." Before too long, the observance was cosponsored by the U.S. Office of Education, the National PTA, the American Legion Auxiliary, and a whole host of other organizations. The tradition continues today with the resolution before you, described in detail the rationale for commemorating American Education Week each year in our country, our state, and here in Livonia Public Schools. I invite the Board to read the resolution that is before you tonight, and to vote formally to place it on our record.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, can you take care of the resolution for us, please?
My pleasure, President Burton. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality, and whereas by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future, and whereas public education employees work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism, and whereas schools unite entire communities, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials in a common purpose. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the trustees of the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District do hereby proclaim November 16th through the 20th, 2015, as the 94th Annual Observance of American Education Week, and urge all citizens to make a commitment to public education and to the future of our children. Be it further resolved that the trustees of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education take this special occasion to thank Livonia Public Schools employees, parents, and community volunteers for the work they do to educate and support the children of our district.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments by the Board? All righty, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are going to take a five or 10-minute recess at this time so that we can thank and congratulate our honorees of this evening. We are at recess. Thank you. Welcome back to the continuation of the regular meeting of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education of November 16th, 2015. The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 3D, Written Communications. Are there any written communications the Board members would like to share? No? Seeing none, we're going to go on to 3E, Audience Communications. Audience Communications is a time that we have set aside at the beginning of each Board meeting for the community to communicate with the Board of Education. We have allotted three minutes per person, and we ask each member of the community who would like to speak to honor the three minutes, and that is so that everybody has a fair opportunity and an equal opportunity to address the Board. We do have a timer set up so that I don't have to interrupt someone speaking. When you hear the timer, you'll know that you've hit your three minutes if you're still speaking at that time. It was suggested by Mr. Centers at our last meeting, and as a means of clarification, I would like to share with the public the three primary roles of the Board of Education. It does help, at this point of our meeting, to understand that, so folks would understand why we're doing, the types of things that we're doing during audience communication. During audience communication, it is a time for the Board to listen to the public, but it is not a time to engage in a question-and-answer session. The three primary roles of the Board of Education are as follows. The first role of the Board of Education is to set policy for the district. The second role of the Board of Education is to hire and evaluate the superintendent who's charged with running the day-to-day operations, including overseeing all employees of the district, other than him or herself. The third role of the Board of Education is to set strategic goals or long-term planning for the district, and to see that the budget is aligned to those goals. Those three roles are the exclusive responsibility of the Board of Education. The role of all day-to-day operations rests with the superintendent and all administration and staff of the district. The administration does have the ultimate authority over the running of the day-to-day operations of the district. Therefore, on items where the Board of Education is being asked to involve ourselves in the day-to-day operations of the district, in accordance with district policy and with state law, the Board refers those items to the superintendent to handle as he or she deems appropriate. In response, it is the role of the Board of Education to evaluate the superintendent in the performance of those duties. It is my hope that that introduction will give a little bit of clarification for those approaching the Board of Education. The only blue slip that I have, or of a community member who would like to address the Board, is that of Mrs. Jody White. Mrs. White?
I appreciate the clarification because, you know, I got a letter from the superintendent, and so this is kind of good news, because I've been coming here for almost a year. This should hopefully be my last time. So first of all, I'd like to, through the Livonia School Board of Trustees, who we elect to supervise our superintendent, I would like to say thank you and share my appreciation for the interim superintendent, who was willingly able to review the legal shenanigans that happened to my family, starting with the phone call from the teacher calling our home in December 2014, after our son was harassed by Churchill Senior and was given no consequences for the Administrative Policy Handbook. She was able to submit the actual Board policy for our family that we were able to use for the MMRMA, so I thank you for that. The corresponding emails between the school administrators, the directors, and our family was also reviewed by Mrs. Oakwist, and she was able to follow the timeline, starting with the complaint given to Lyndon Lewis and the witness list of the boys who saw the one inappropriate text. Also, thank you for pointing that out to us in our family. Officer Hess was able to clearly expose the ninth-grade varsity cheerleader's lie, as she and her family failed to attend their own evidentiary hearing, after making up false allegations about our son, and we did not pay for the subpoenas, just so you know, to be written out, they were also served to the school district. I appreciate, though, you reviewing the evidence that John Raymond, the Director of Public Safety, who had the complaint from Lyndon Lewis, and mandated that Keith McDonald to provide a copy of that complaint to us with his investigation, and I'm sure the failure of him following those directions are duly noted in the principal's file. I'm grateful that the attorney, Gary King, that represents the school district, paid by the citizens, was able to see through the approach of Dana Winery, who was able to call the concerned parent names and then have her removed from the school premises by using police force. Serving a student legal paperwork during school hours and school property was wrong and against our school policy. I look forward to the finished compiled report that goes along with these Board policies that you sent to me via certified mail on November 9th, after 11 months after asking about this incident. I want to thank you for taking the time to read all the evidence that was provided to you and for doing something that should have been done a long time ago, reading all of it, and that bottom line, that my son was set up because he was mandated to tattle against a fellow student. I appreciate you not making up a new narrative that was done often in this political arena when a mistake was made by the administration. We heartfully accept your apology from the Churchill Administration and Livonia Police for using a tactic of creating probable cause, as our Honorable Judge of Livonia, Judge Kathleen McCann, who was given the same evidence as Mrs. Oakwist, was able to dismiss an important morality situation for no cause of action. To all the parents who have sons, please be aware that the Livonia Courts will side with the female, and precedent has now been set in our own community that men and young ninth-grade males will not be given due process when they're falsely accused. Two more paragraphs. Taxpayers take heed of who we elect to sit in these very important seats, as they represent our moral and ethical fibers of our community.
Mrs. White, I'm going to have respectfully ask you...
Mrs. Oakwist, it's very good to see that you are truly an amazing superintendent, and that you care, and you took the time to investigate the facts.
Mrs. White?
And that the parents do appreciate your higher level of morality. So as I move on, as you so nicely asked me to do, I rest assured I will be moving on, and that the parent groups will continue to watch the new assistant principals, since Marsha Burden, Lyndon Lewis are no longer welcome to serve at Churchill High School.
I'm asking you to follow policy, please.
We're also going to pray for Mr. McDonald and his new staff, so that he...
We are at recess. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Thank you for all your...
I share that the incident which took place in the fall of 2014 has been investigated and reported upon by the school administration, as is appropriate. Since that time, the district has responded to FOIA requests, as required by law, and where it had the capacity to do so. Any information being requested from another agency, such as the Police Department, cannot be provided by Livonia Public Schools. Those documents would have to be requested by the Police Department or other agency that possesses them. Any documents disclosing information pertaining to other students cannot be shared, as it would be a violation of the law. Recently, the superintendent met with Mrs. White to address any outstanding concerns. Those concerns and questions have been answered, again, both verbally and in writing. All appropriate and necessary actions have been taken and have been communicated to the White family. There is simply nothing more that the district is able to do at this time. Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to address the Board at this time? Seeing none, let's see here. Sorry? Next item on our agenda? Next item on our agenda is Response to Prior Audience Communications. At our last voting meeting of the Board of Education, there were a number of folks who did approach the Board with various questions or topics that they would like the Board or the district to take a look at. I would like to give you some feedback on those items at this time. A parent questioned paying for a magazine that was used in a child's class. As the principal had previously stated to the parents, the magazine funds are optional and not required of families. The donations offset the funds provided by the school and the PTA for those materials. A complaint was made that one of three phone lines at an elementary school had an outgoing message that was outdated. The correction was made the next day. It is encouraged that if any oversight is noticed, that people bring it to the attention of the given office where it can be corrected quickly. A concern was raised about flyers received in backpack mail. The district has an approval process, and while we do review flyers and approve the distribution of some, it is not meant to be an endorsement by the district of the business or the product. Many families do rely on these communications to learn about extracurricular opportunities for their child. The district works to strike a balance between providing information which may be of interest to the students and the families that we serve, while also being conscious of not inundating LPS families with such information. A concern was raised about cars lining the street waiting for the school bus, potentially causing a safety issue for drivers entering or leaving the neighborhood. The Transportation Department has been working on this situation in this given neighborhood, and the district will be sending a communication home to all bus riders in that neighborhood, asking the parents wait beyond the boulevard area, so that they are not parked in the most narrow area of the entrance of the subdivision. A request was made that individual Board members should be able to access any desired document. If the Board of Education wishes to review any additional information, we have an established process to do so via Board policy. A concern was raised about the age and condition of the Jackson Center facility. The parent voicing the concerns about the items that needed attention acknowledged that most of those items had already been taken care of. The outstanding request was the addition of swings, specifically for the ECP program. The district is working with the staff at Jackson to assess not only the need for swings, but other large motor equipment that may be needed as well. With 2,000 employees serving nearly 15,000 students and their families, sometimes something really does get overlooked. Please do not feel the need to wait for a Board meeting to address the issue, although you are always welcome to do so, if you choose. Most often, contacting the teacher or the principal can achieve a much quicker resolution to your problem. As you can see, it was a busy meeting last month. We had quite a few. The next item on our agenda is Item 4, Consent Agenda. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the following consent agenda items as recommended by the superintendent. 5A, minutes of the regular meeting of October 19, 2015. 6A, bills for payment, November 17, 2015.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Johnson, and Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
And President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 6B, Audit Report. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the 2014-2015 audit report as presented by the audit firm of Plant Moran.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Abby?
Thank you very much.
If you have any questions with us?
Yes, good evening. I'm going to make a very brief introduction, and then Mrs. Teresa Pollak from Plant Moran will be up here to do a presentation. I just wanted to remind, of course, the Board of Education why we're here this evening, and look back at what we did a couple weeks ago. As we do every year, as required by law, we prepare our financial statements as of June 30th, which is end of our fiscal year. Those financial statements are then required to be audited by an independent auditing firm, and then they will present an opinion as to the fairness of those financial statements. So as you know, two weeks ago, we did have an opportunity to sit down at our committee meeting, and Mrs. Pollak and Mr. Marchese went through those very thick financial statements that you have in your packet this evening in substantial detail. We won't quite do that this evening, I think you got that. We will, however, go through the highlights of the results of the year, so we have an opportunity for a second time to present that information to you and to the community. As you know, very pleased to say that we had an unqualified opinion, which doesn't sound that exciting, but that is the highest level of assurance that the auditors can present to us, both in our financial statements and in our federal audit that's also required. You also had last week an opportunity to read a letter to the Board of Education prepared by the auditors with some recommendations, with some observations, with some future information as well. So you've had an opportunity, if you had any questions on that, to get back with us, or certainly again tonight, if you will. So with that, again, I'd like to introduce Terry Pollak. Terry has been our partner in charge here for many, many years, as you know. Terry is also the partner in charge of K-12, out of Auburn Hills, I think, currently, and I don't say how many years anymore, we quit saying that, many years of experience. We're very pleased to have her on the engagement and with us again this evening. So with that, Mrs. Pollak.
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure to be here again this evening.
Welcome.
As Ms. Abby summarized for you, we did have an excellent audit process, and all of the opinions that we have expressed in each of the audit reports are unmodified opinions, which is the highest level of assurance that we can give as your auditors, that the financial statements are free of any material misstatements, and that they do conform to all the required generally accepted accounting principles, and that the federal program testing that has been conducted relative to compliance also yielded no findings, no question costs, and we identified no internal control deficiencies. So that's all terrific news. The slide deck that we've distributed is... The slide deck that we've distributed is the artistic colorful version of the financial report. So I'll walk through this, which really captures some of the key financial highlights from the Livonia report for the year. The first slide that we have in the slide deck has a little bit of discussion about GASB number 68, which we talked about in your cabinet session. So GASB 68 is a very significant accounting change that all public entities were required to undergo for the first time this year. And what this accounting change did was require the district's proportionate share of the underfunding at the state retirement system to be presented as a long-term liability on your consolidated government-wide full accrual financial statements. And Livonia's share of that liability that you're now carrying as an obligation for the first time in your financial statements amounts to $254 million. So very, very significant change, and there's a lot of discussion, disclosure, and things that are different in the financial statements for the first time as a result of that. So although that's a very dramatic accounting change, the one item that we do want to make clear is that that really does not impact the budgetary basis or fund-level reporting for the district that you use in your day-to-day management of the finances of the district, and it does not really impact bond rating, which was something that was initially going to be feared because it does actually result for almost every public school to show a deficit net position on these full accrual statements. But the bonding community has indicated, they've been aware of this change for several years, that it was coming, they knew the system was underfunded, and the funding mechanisms to deal with this underfunding are simply those very, very high retirement contribution rates based on your annual payroll at the district, and those, you know, you've already been feeling the burdens for those and will continue to as every other public school will. So the next slide shows the differences between fund-level reporting and this consolidated government-wide full accrual reporting. So you'll see on the right-hand side, this is the consolidated balance of the assets, liabilities, and fund balance for all of your governmental funds, and you'll see you have a fund balance of $83 million. The majority of that is housed in your bond fund right now for your capital project improvements, but that does also include about $3 million of your unassigned general fund fund balance. Now contrast that to the government-wide column, you'll see that the government-wide net position is this negative $187 million. And so that's the very dramatic impact of the presentation of that GASB 68 liability for the first time. The next slide, labeled Page 4, so this is a snapshot summary of the balance sheet of each of the governmental funds at June 30th. You'll see your general fund is presented separately as your primary operating fund, and then the 2013 bond fund is also displayed separately as another major fund due to the size of the dollars housed in the activity in that fund this year. And then the final column, your non-major governmental funds, would include your sinking fund, your debt service funds, food service, your center program, and then some other small capital projects funds. So let's focus first on the general fund. You'll see the total assets in the general fund at the end of the year are about $42.4 million. The two largest balances comprising that would be about $23 million of receivables. That would include the July and August state aid payments that come in after the closeout of the school year, along with summer property tax collections that arrive after June 30th. And there's about an $18 million cash balance as well. That's offset by the liabilities and deferred inflows, which include a state aid anticipation note of $8.3 million, which is used to handle the cash flow needs that the district will experience in the summer months, and particularly as you get into September when you do not receive any state aid payment whatsoever. And that also includes the accounts payable and accrued payroll balances of the district, which are about $14 million, and then $9 million which would be due to other funds. So within the fund equity or fund balance section, you'll see the general fund, total fund balance completed this year at $4,290,000. That is segregated by various categories. Non-spendable would be things like prepaid and inventory items that are not in spendable form but haven't been depleted from fund balance yet. You'll see the assigned fund balance of about $1.1 million. That is the projected budget deficit for the 2015 school year as the budget was adopted at the start of the year. And so that leaves the unassigned fund balance within your general fund at about $2,971,000. And I would describe that as, those are really the resources that don't have any restriction on them that you're carrying forward into future years. And so relative to the size of the district, that is a fairly small number, which we'll look at some comparisons in a few slides. Within the bond fund, you'll see that the total assets in the bond fund are about $72 million. That would be the unspent proceeds as of June 30th, and offset by the liabilities for amounts that would be due to contractors and other providers, leaving the restricted portion of the fund balance there about $63 million, which will be fully expended as the bond projects are completed in the next year or two. And then you'll see within your, over within your non-major governmental funds, the total fund balance in the non-major funds is about $15.1 million. And you'll see the largest portion of that would be described as restricted. The majority of the restricted fund balances are what is held in your sinking fund, which is restricted for capital improvements and with the active bond project. Those funds are accumulating for future use because you're able to handle a lot of the improvements with what was planned with the bonded construction fund. The next slide focuses on just the general fund and looks at the revenue and expenditures and changes in fund balance for the year in comparison to the budgeted amounts. And so you'll see that the total revenue this year came in at $144.8 million, which was pretty much spot-on with what the budgeted forecast would have anticipated. Expenditures totaled $144.3 million and would have been budgeted approximately $2 million higher than that. And so you've got about a 2% what we'll call a favorable budget variance. It is illegal to expend more than budgeted, and so, you know, a positive budget variance is generally a favorable thing. And so then you'll see that the net impact of those would be the increase in the general fund fund balance this year of just $470,000. So given the size of your budget, very, very close to what we just call a break-even year. Okay, now onto the color in a, so those artists don't make us look bad. The next slide deals with general fund revenue, and this just looks at the various funding sources that derive your general fund revenue. And you'll see the blue portion of the pie would be at 78%. Those would be sources that come to the district directly from the state. Included in that number, you know, the state has begun sending funds directly to the state retirement system on behalf of the districts. They don't even funnel through. You are required to record that, report that in your revenue and in your expenditure, even though the dollars do not come into the district. The local source revenue at about $28.1 million, the biggest portion of that would be property tax revenue, and then other sources and federal sources comprising the balance. The next slide takes a look at that revenue and combines the, your foundation allowance, which is your annual allotment that the state provides to you or dictates to you, and it is funded both from a combination of property tax sources and state sources, but even though it comes from property taxes, you have no discretion at the community level to change that foundation allowance. So your foundation allowance is 83.3% of your revenue, and that's, you know, essentially an inherited amount that you must learn to live with as you develop your budget each year. And then the remaining 15% would be the local and other state sources, and most of those types of sources are what we'll call categoricals, where the state is funding particular programs with some restriction on them. The next slide, this one, now we're switching gears, we're looking at expenditures and just an analysis of where are the funds being spent within your general fund. So the blue portion of the pie at almost 58% would be the direct salary costs of district staff, and then the red portion of the pie at almost 33% would be the employee benefits. So put those two together, and 89.9% of your budget is going to staff costs, with just the remaining 10%, really going to purchased services, and a lot of that includes operations and, you know, things like heating and light and insurance and all those frivolous things. Although with El Nino, maybe we don't need quite so much next year, so. The next slide, this is a little historical depiction of the revenue and the expenditures that Livonia has experienced over the past seven years. So you'll see the blue bar would represent your revenue dollars, the red bar would be your expenditure dollars. And you'll see those numbers are tracking very, very close to each other each year. So you have really lived with a balanced budget for the past seven years. Many districts who would have had a larger fund balance several years ago before these significant state funding cuts, we've seen them spend their fund balance down where they're still in an excess spending mode. Livonia's really learned to live within their annual allocations, I would say, you know, some time ago. But the other thing that I think is important from looking at the slide is just the sheer drop in those dollars in total. So some of that is a function of enrollment, but it also is, you'll see, that big drop in 2011, that was really when the state actually cut your foundation allowance and cut all foundation allowances, and they've only made very, very small incremental increases in The next slide, this is a depiction of your general fund fund balance as it relates to your general fund expenditures. So what percentage of your annual budget are you actually holding in fund balance? You'll see for 2015, Livonia's general fund balance percentage is at about 2.97%. Just for comparison purposes, the state average last year, if you exclude Detroit Public Schools, was about 9.4%. And so you would definitely be below what would be state average in terms of your resources carrying forward within the general fund. This does get more attention now with early warning legislation that the state has passed. If a district is below a 5% measure based on revenue, the district does have to do some heightened reporting to provide the state with some assurances and security that you're not in any danger of going into deficit, and that's what the early warning is designed to address. And then the last slide, switching gears just a little bit, this slide is a presentation historically of the amount of dollars that Livonia has been putting towards the state retirement system for the MEPs' contributions on an annual basis. So you'll see in 2015, the total contribution going into the retirement system from the district is about $33.2 million. And the bars are split, you'll see, you know, back in 2012, we start to have that little bit of pink bar. That represents that portion of the funding that the state is sending directly on behalf of the districts, but nonetheless is still reflected in your revenue and in your expenditure. So I think, you know, that's really been, I'd say, the big news in trying to balance budgets would be that, you know, retirement system drain, that given that $254 million obligation, you know, we don't anticipate that that is going to be decreasing anytime So those were the highlights, but I'm happy to respond to any questions at all.
Are there questions or comments by the board? Mr. Johnson?
Just one. Terry, given the fact that the GASB 68, I mean, it doesn't change our decision-making.
Correct.
Doesn't change our required contributions, and doesn't change our bond rating, what's the whole purpose behind the GASB 68?
Well, so the intent of the GASB in passing the standard was to really reflect the long-term obligations that all the public entities are going to be on the hook for. Legally, the state retirement system is required to pay those pension benefits, and the only place they really have to look for those resources would be the districts that contribute. And so the idea would be to a user of the financial statements, it reflects the true long view of the resources you have available.
We've been in that position for a long time.
Absolutely.
And then all of a sudden, they just decide, well, we wanted to show up on your financial report.
Exactly, and it's intended to mirror more what a commercial-type entity would have to do in their financial reporting. So commercial accounting for businesses would have always reflected those types of obligations.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you for your presentation, Terry, and thank you for the in-depth presentation just a couple of weeks ago on all this material in a lot greater detail. We appreciate it.
Great, well, thank you, and, you know, thank you to both the board, and we wanted to make sure we recognize the staff at the district, the business office, and other staff who support the audit process. They work very hard to be accurate and well-prepared and helpful and supportive during what's an arduous process, so we do want to thank them as well.
And as a board, we also want to thank our whole finance department headed up by Ms. Lisa Abbey, who we think the world of, and that job is headed up by you and carried out by a whole team of folks, and we are very, very grateful to lay our heads down at night and know our district is well-run. It's something that the community should not take for granted for a moment.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Terry.
Good evening. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you, you too. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 6C, Adoption of the 2015-2016 First Budget Amendments. May we have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. McDonald.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached amended budgets for the 2015-16 school year. General Fund, Special Education Fund, Retirement Fund 2013 Bond Series 1, Debt Retirement Fund 2014 Refunding Bond, 2013 Bond Fund, Building and Site Technologies Fund, Sinking Fund Capital Projects, Food Service Fund, Health and Welfare Fund, Athletic Fund, Scholarship Fund, and Funded Projects Fund.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mr. Centers. And Ms. Abbey, would you like to address this item as well?
Thank you very much again, I would. As we do every year, this time of the year, we do bring forward an amended budget for the current fiscal school year. As you know, these budgets were prepared last spring based on a lot of information that we projected at that time, enrollment, staffing, health and welfare costs, supply costs, utility costs, et cetera. As we get into the fall, and we've had our enrollment count, our first student count, as well as all, most of our staff in place gives us a better idea and an opportunity to go through those numbers, make sure they're accurate, and provide the best projection going forward for the remainder of the year. We do this at least another two times during the school year, usually again in March, and then at the end of the year as we firm up our year-end numbers. This provides an opportunity to get with the Board of Education a couple times of the year, make sure that we have our budget projections and that you're well-aware of where we stand as we go through the year. So we did have an opportunity at our committee meeting two weeks ago to look at some stuff in detail. I'll just remind the board, starting at the end of August, I provide a lengthy memo to the Board of Education with some summary information on the first amended budget. And then at our committee meeting, you'll recall, we brought the green sheet out and had an opportunity to go through the change from the projected budget to the amended budget in detail. And then we also brought out the yellow- And then we also brought out the yellow sheet, which, as I explained, then really provided a summary of the changes. So while I go through the changes tonight, while there are some large numbers, there really are only a few items that impacted on a general basis, the overall projections for the year. So we also brought to the Board of Education at our committee meeting, the first amended budget book. This provides a significant amount of detail, so while we adopt the budget in accordance with the law, which is by major function, this budget book provides every change by major function. So if salaries changed in elementary or salaries changed in our special education, that's reflected here. And then also in very minute details also provided in this book as well. So it's by almost, not quite, but almost every line item. So it would be elementary salaries, elementary benefits, elementary supplies, purchase services, et cetera. So again, a tremendous amount of detail as well as some graphs similar to what you saw this evening, looking at our fund balance over time, looking at revenues, expenditures and enrollments over time. And then, of course, all of the other funds that was read in the resolution as well that would also be adopted tonight. So again, we had an opportunity to sit down at our committee meeting and go through those in detail. So tonight, we do have one more PowerPoint slide to go through. We've got that up, terrific. And on the first screen, on the first chart, a familiar chart that the Board of Education has seen many times, we'll be looking at the adopted budget, again, that was adopted last June, and then compare that to our first amendment. And beginning with the fund balance line, what you just heard our auditor say is that our fund balance for the end of 2014-15 or a beginning fund balance for this year is about $4.3 million and about $2.5 million greater than we had anticipated. So again, a favorable change in fund balance, which is very good for the district, that helps us as we move forward in our budgeting process. Revenues changed from 142.4 million to 141.4 million or just under $1 million. I'll go through those details in a minute. Expenditures changed from 143.6 million to 144 million or just a little over $400,000. The overall change was negative, it was not a good change, it's actually an increase in the deficit of $1.4 million. So our fund balance started at $4.3 million and we're now projecting it to end, at the end of this school year, 15-16, at $1.7 million. Overall change of about $1 million. So better than we projected last summer, but not as good as it sounded a few minutes ago when we heard that we came in, our fund balance came in higher than we anticipated in the audit. That fund balance as a percentage of revenue, which is how the state calculates it, is 1.22%. Remember, it was about 2.96, 97% a few minutes ago when Mrs. Pollock was standing there. So again, that does leave Livonia Public Schools as an early warning district according to the state's calculation of about 5% fund balance. So let me just briefly go over some of those revenue changes that we talked about a couple of weeks ago on the next slide. Oh, we got it already. The first line item, the revenue stabilization or 147C or just under $1.3 million, that's exactly what Terry Pollock was just talking about, that money that comes into the district that we have to record as revenue and then goes right out again from the district as we record it as expenses. I call it fund balance neutral, meaning that number should generally always come in, whatever our revenue is what our expense is. So we'll see that number again on our expenditure slide. That was one large change and this probably will not be a final number, we don't have final numbers from the state, so this may change in our March amendment, you'll see that, but again, it will be fund balance neutral to the district. Second line item, you see a reduction in revenue of about $620,000. We talked about this, this is our adult ed and vocational education funds. They're what we used to call state categoricals or state grants. We've moved those funds for accounting purposes only to the funded projects fund and you'll remember, we pointed that out in our budget book, it's actually the very last page. So in our funded projects fund, it really allows us to identify each program, whether it's local, state or federal, by program, look at the revenues and look at the expenditures. We think it's a little more transparent, as well as the fact that several of our state categorical grants have moved from the district being the fiduciary responsibility to the county being the fiduciary responsibility, so there's some more accounting and record keeping involved. And this is a little bit easier to pull that out. It doesn't, it doesn't, it makes it more transparent. So you'll see an expenditure decrease for that as well. The state aid, funding source from the state went down almost 1.5 million, the majority of that, almost $1 million, is a result of our enrollment coming in less than we anticipated. The balance of that would be state categorical or state grant revenue, a little bit less than we anticipated. Part of that, we talked about, is 31A or at-risk money. And as we talked about, that's, that's a source that we'll be looking at this fall and reviewing what we can and can't use those resources for, and that will probably be something we'll be updating the board on in March, hopefully to the better with that resource. And then again, other changes just across various line items in our local and transfers and other funds. So the total change in revenue, again, a decrease of $984,000. And on our next slide, the expenditures, again, that's the retirement stabilization or the 147C money of 1.2 million, $1,282,000. Again, fund balance neutral, same number for revenue and expenditures, programs to the funded project, again, adult ed and vocational education funds. The next line item is salary adjustments, that's $626,000. As you saw earlier tonight, that's on about $80 million of salary cost in the general fund. So while it's a large number, percentage-wise, it's very small. A big part of that as well, I talked about at our earlier meeting, is you'll recall that we provided an early retirement incentive to our staff last year and about $390,000 of that will be recorded in the general fund. We budgeted for it in salaries, but we need to move it to a benefit line item. The amounts were paid out in August as, as per our contract. We just needed to move it to a budget line item, so that number's actually reflected in the next line item, benefit adjustments. So we had a $390,000 decrease in salaries and a $390,000 increase in benefit adjustments. And the balance of that adjustment was in payroll costs, $155,000 net benefit adjustments. And then we just had other changes across the thousands and thousands of line items as we shore up our purchase services, our supplies, our fuel, our utilities, et cetera, grants, tuition and any transfers that we may have. So that's the $268,000. So that is the overall change of a lot of numbers to get to $431,000. Again, a very, very small change, but a lot of line items. And then just mention again that the details are in the budget book and the resolutions are in your packet this evening, but the other funds of the district did come in generally as we anticipated, no major changes in those. We've just updated some revenues or expenditures, but generally fund balances are where we would anticipate. And as we do, we will keep on top of those as well throughout the year. And if we have major changes, of course, we don't wait till March to inform the board. If there's something that's significant or feel would change our ability to continue to operate the way we do, we would certainly update the board. But generally speaking, the changes that we bring to you are not of that nature and they do wait until our next amendment, or we bring an amendment forward if we need to earlier. So with all of that, very quick information, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from the board? All righty.
I do have one comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Centers.
Just looking at what Plant Moran showed us with our state funds, per pupil funds, and we will know probably in June what the state will give us this year. A lot of times, we will go and lobby our legislatures in late, early summer. By then, it's almost too late, the dice cast. We have, we have not seen significant increases in revenue, especially since we have saw that $470 increase, decrease in state per pupil funds. It is time for public schools to get a raise. So now is a good time to contact representatives, anyone watching at home, parents, teachers, whoever, saying that our kids need a raise.
Thank you.
That's all I got, that's all I got.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the board? All righty. Again, we thank you very much for all the work that goes into this. It's, you can boil it down to, you know, 10-minute presentation, but it's, it's weeks or months to get it all put together and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the, before the board by Mrs. McDonald and it's supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonifield, will you please take the role?
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonifield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item 6D, approval of bid results for fuel. May we have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Laura?
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of diesel and gasoline fuel for the transportation and operation departments from the low bidder Petroleum Traders Corporation, Fort Wayne, Indiana. Petroleum Traders Corporation has the lowest markups on both diesel, minus .0427, and gasoline, minus .0306, and has been committed to not raising their markup for two years.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mr. Johnson. Ms. Abbey, would you like to address this item for us?
Yes, thank you. Again, another item that we had an opportunity to look at in detail at our last committee meeting and we are, as we have, the last couple of years, we did go out for bid, formal RFP for fuel, for both gasoline and for diesel, for both our operations and of course for our transportation, for our students. And we are recommending the low bidder Petroleum Traders Corporation. We did have two responses, you have those in your packet. While both are great companies, we did take the lowest bid and we, they agreed to do, hold their price for two years, so we are recommending that we lock that in for two years and go ahead with, with Petroleum Traders. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you. President Burton, you know, I apologize, Ms. Abbey, but I didn't check, or I'm assuming that you checked that they're registered with the state of Michigan to do business here?
I will double-check, but I am sure that, that they did that, but we will not issue a contract until we know they are.
So how are we going to be reassured? I mean, if you don't, if we vote on this and we approve their contract and then what happens? What would be the process or procedures if they are not registered?
I would notify you and we would go to the second low bidder. You would rescind this bid and we would go to the second low bidder.
Okay, so then would it have to be brought back to us for a second vote?
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Bonifield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonifield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item 6E, approval of bid results for the Cleveland play structure. May we have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Yes, Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the low bid for play structure equipment for Cleveland Elementary School from Great Lakes Recreation Company, Zeeland, Michigan, for a total cost of $43,837.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Laura. Ms. Abbey, would you like to address this?
Thank you very much. Yes, we did go out for bid, our formal RFP, to replace the playground equipment at Cleveland Elementary. You'll recall that we did remove that equipment for safety and appropriateness purposes. We are pleased to present the vendor who had the lowest responsible bid, Great Lakes Recreation Company out of Zeeland, $43,837. And you'll recall, at our committee meeting, we had an opportunity to look at that in detail as well as the design board that we brought forward. And they did work to incorporate the camel that is out there and provided us a desert theme for the play structure. I think it was 82 different touch spots for children to, to be on the playscape, so we're very excited to, to bring that forward and would recommend moving forward. There is a lead time on this, the board had asked if it would help to move this up, if, if it would help. It's really going to depend on what happens with the, with the ground and the temperature and we'll see what happens. We'll get it in as soon as we can, but it'll all depend on how long the ground stays as warm as it has been, so.
Well, today helped. All right, are there any questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Jarvis?
I'm just eager to see how the oasis theme looks in a Michigan January.
You'll have icicles dripping off our palm trees. That's all right, it'll just feel warmer looking out there at it. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mrs. Bonifield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonifield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda this evening is item 7, reports from the superintendent. Mrs. Oakwest?
Thank you, President Burton. It's my pleasure to share with you some good news about Livonia Public Schools, a few different highlights for you. Last Friday, we were so pleased to welcome the Michigan PTA President, Ruth Ann Jakett, and the National PTA Service Board Member, Deb Fritz, to Livonia Public Schools for the day. So thanks to Liz Jarvis, who coordinated that visit for us. Deb came into town from Pennsylvania to do some training over the weekend. She asked the Michigan PTA President to highlight a school or district and Ruth Ann told us she immediately thought of Livonia Public Schools. So she represents the entire state of Michigan. As you can imagine, that was a great source of pride and should be for all of our staff and our parents. They asked to visit Nijiro, which is, of course, a very unique school in our district. They had a wonderful tour and they were so thoroughly impressed with the dual immersion program being provided so expertly by our staff. And we also had an opportunity to see some amazing parent volunteers who were just working tirelessly at Nijiro as they do every day, in many ways to support the students and staff. They then had an opportunity, and Liz and I joined them as well, to the Patriot Inn for the Thanksgiving buffet, and they were so impressed with our culinary arts students and they had a chance to tour Franklin as well. Finally, in the evening, they enjoyed some time at Stevenson, they were hosted by the Livonia Warriors Robotics Group and they had an opportunity to see the documentary Slingshot. So it was certainly a point of pride for Livonia Public Schools that while we had a National PTA Board Member here and the Michigan PTA President, that they chose Livonia Public Schools as their day to spend in, in Michigan. I'd like to take a little time to highlight some accomplishments of our students in the classroom, on the stage and on the athletic fields. So we have some students to acknowledge from Churchill High School. As you may recall, at a previous board meeting, we were able to highlight some students from our other high schools. We had a number of students I'd like to recognize from the National Merit Scholarship students. We have four semifinalists. As you may know, approximately 1.5 million students take this exam and then they take the top 50,000 students and from there segregate that out. And these students were among the top third of those top students. They are Laura DiMarco, Zachary Absnick, James Johns and Angelica Zoo. We'd like to certainly congratulate them on that amazing honor. We also had three students who received commendations and these students were in the top 50,000 of the more than 1.5 million that took the PSAT. I hope I'm hitting all of their names correctly. Jack Scheifelbein, my close Churchill friends?
Scheifelbein.
Scheifelbein. Sean Moisen? Yes, I saw a nod. And Brendan Van de Keeft? All righty. So we would like to congratulate them, their teachers and their parents for this wonderful honor. We also have, we are in full swing with regard to our school plays and performances and concerts this Thursday, if you'd like to join us. We have a very special event entitled Livonia Sings that will be hosted, which is a district-wide vocal festival at Churchill High School at 7:00. In addition to that, all of our concerts and music performances will be uploaded onto our website. We'd like to thank our, our music teacher leaders, Heather Wickman and Melody Provence- Provancher, who have put together a listing of all of those concerts, and that is going to be uploaded on our website and also provided to our board members. And we invite our public to take advantage of these opportunities. It's not only our musical concerts, but we are in full swing with our performances and plays, and for any of you that have had students participate in that, you know the time and effort that goes in to that, and it's a wonderful evening of entertainment. So we invite the community to join us for any of those, and again, they will be available on our website. Moving on to the athletic field, we had, we have a couple of our fall teams who have made it into the postseason. Our Churchill Chargers varsity volleyball team are the MHSAA Regional Champions. That's a pretty big deal. They are playing tomorrow night in the state quarterfinal at Gibraltar Carlson High School at 7:00 PM. So, please join us in cheering on our Lady Chargers. And our Franklin Patriots celebrated a great victory on Friday night over the Berkeley Bears. I'm sorry, Mrs. Abby, your Bears went down. But this is a, another-
Good night.
This, it was a good night. It was a great night for, for Franklin, and it was a great victory, and they are moving on to the semi, the state semifinals on Saturday versus Detroit Martin Luther King in Dearborn at 1:00 PM. It's been approximately 40 years since they have been to that point. I think the last time was 1975. So, we certainly congratulate both of those teams who continue on into the fall season, even as though our winter sports have begun. So many, many accomplishments to celebrate. We know that our students excel in the classroom, on the stage, in the athletic field, and in many other venues, and we just enjoy highlighting those as well. Finally, today was a great day in Livonia Public Schools. The LPS Foundation spent the day, and I was able to join them for, for many of the grant awards. They awarded 16 grants totaling over $37,000 to stu, to teachers across our district. There were 52 grants that were submitted. 16 were selected as part of that process. There was almost $150,000 in requests, and again, they were able to grant about $37,000. And I believe we made, had the approximate total that these grants would be impacting not only those staff, but approximately 3,200 students. And so, the work of that team was tremendous, and Steve Seattle from Roush Industries, who is a great community partner, created large checks. Mrs. Eddy, I think you got one of those, right? All right. And it was a little bit like Publisher's Clearinghouse. It wasn't quite the amount, but it was close, and we had some very excited staff, as we surprised them in their classrooms. And I just wanted to acknowledge the LPS Foundation, who continues to provide amazing support to our district. So, there are many, as you know, many wonderful things happening in Livonia Public Schools because of the people who serve here each day. So, happy Thanksgiving to our families and to our staff, and that's it for me, President Burton.
Thank you very much. As you can tell, it's been a very, very busy fall. The next item on our agenda is Item 8, Hearing from Board Members. We are gonna have a number of policies that we're gonna go through, hopefully pretty quickly. Policy changes and bylaw changes for the Board of Education take two readings. The first reading is simply a reading. Any questions and answers are dealt with, and then a second reading is when we vote on those. So we are in, in the first reading process with some, and the second with others. The first item is 8A, Second Reading of Board Policy, BBBC, Board Member Expenses and Development. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and adopt Board Policy Language per the attached document for the following, BBBC, Board Member Expenses and Development Opportunities.
Support.
I heard a chorus of support there. Mrs. Bonnefield, I, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield, and Mrs. Oakley, would you like to address this item?
I would. I'll give a general overview of these, these three items. We've gone over them in the study session, in our committee meeting, and also for our first reading, but I will give a, a brief overview. As part of the transparency requirements as required by law, and in accordance with our policy, we've made a few variances to Board Policy BBBC, specific to Board Member Expenses and Development Opportunities. As you know, we encourage our board to attend educational leadership and development classes and workshops and conferences, and so if you take a look at the center section of the, this bylaw, we have three bulleted points, and it really highlights that any direct district expenditures, any individual board member reimbursements, or any expenditure of district funds that exceeds $500 per event or includes overnight travel, all of those cases must be brought to the board and approved by the board at a voting meeting prior to the expenses being incurred or prior to the payment of the reimbursement to the board member. Again, we utilize a standard expense reporting procedure, which was, which was shared with the board at one of our study sessions, and so we follow the same guidelines as we do with our staff with regard to those reporting documents and the reimbursement procedures. And so this really delineates a little bit more clearly that each one of these expenditures or reimbursements must be brought to the board for approval prior to expending those funds.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? All righty. Seeing none, Mrs., we have a motion on the, before the board for Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield, and Mrs. Bonnefield, would you please take the role?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
And President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is 8B, Second Reading of Board Policy, BBBE, Board Member Compensation and Expenses. May we have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and adopt Board Policy Language per the attached document for the following, BBBE, Board Member Compensation and Expenses.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. And Mrs. Oakley, would you like to address any portion of that, or, or really consider it all taken care of with the first?
It is. The only thing I'll note on BBBE is that the, there was a portion underneath the section that you currently see that referred to reimbursement for expenses. That portion, we've had a strike through in that section and included that in the prior BBBC, and so you will no longer see that as part of BBBE. And so we recommend approval of the policy as currently shown before you.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board?
Since this is the, the last one regarding the transparency issues, I just want to compliment my fellow board members, because we were presented with a number of options when we first decided to do this, and this board was very enthusiastic about choosing the most transparent option for the public. So, you know, everyone at this table, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is 8C, Removal of Board Policy, BBBEE, reimbursable expenses of board members. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and remove Policy BBBEE, reimbursement, reimbursable expenses of board members, as its language has been incorporated into Board Policy BBBE, Board Member Compensation and Expenses. Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Oakley, is there anything you'd like to add to this, or is fairly self, self-explanatory?
It is, but Mrs. Burton, I'd like to make a correction, please, on this.
Okay.
If you take a look at, under the recommendation, the last line, it says Board Policy BBBE, Board Member Compensation and Expenses. This language from BBBEE was actually incorporated into BBBC. So I'd ask board members to please make note on the final line of the recommendation that we, it was actually incorporated into Policy BBBC, and I'd like to correct that for the record-
Okay.
-prior to your voting on it.
And since we vote on, not as what in writ, what is written in front of us, but rather what is stated, could we have, Mr. Centers, could you please reread the corrected motion with-
Certainly.
-substituting BBBC and its proper title, which is about three page prior, three pages prior?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and remove Board Policy BBBEE, reimbursable expenses of board members, and is, as its language has been incorporated into Board Policy BBBC, Board Member Compensation and Expenses.
I'll support the amended motion.
It, I'm sorry, it is-
It's board-
BBBC.
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 BBBC has, is this title?
Board Member Expenses and Development Opportunities, rather.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for catching that. Mrs. Oakley, and whoever else on down the line caught that. Are there any questions or comments about the change in this policy?
The only comment I would make is that this, this portion of this policy in its entirety, in the spirit, according to the spirit of the legislation, has been incorporated into that policy. Therefore, we are voting on the removal of this bylaw.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you please take the role?
President Burton, would you indulge me, and let me just read it one more time-
Go right ahead.
-since we've changed the wording?
Yep.
We are voting on the following. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and remove Board Policy BBBEE, reimbursable expenses of board members, as it, as its language has been incorporated into Board Policy BBBC, Board Member Expenses and Development Opportunities. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bon, uh, Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. McDon, uh, Mrs., Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 8D, First Reading of Board Policy, BD1, Formulation of Bylaws. We do not need a motion for this, because we're not voting on it tonight, but Mrs. Oak, Mrs. Oakley, would you like to address this item?
I will. In the process of making the changes to the prior bylaws, one of the things that we had discussed was the necessity of adding some language to a couple of our current board operation bylaws, whereby we clearly stated how we would go about voting on the deletion of a bylaw or a policy. And so BD1 has a couple of changes, and those are highlighted for you. I'll, I'll briefly go over those. In the second paragraph, it initially stated that a board member could request a review, a change, or adoption of a bylaw. As we took a look at BD2, which we will look at in just a moment, there was also verbiage that said, "a board member, the superintendent, or other interested party." So we added that, that phrasing to reflect the same intent from BD2. We have also added the word deletion, so this would regarding, this would apply to a review, a change, a deletion, or adoption of a bylaw. And then I will read the corrected, or the modified sentence a little further down in that paragraph. "The president will schedule the request on the agenda, notify the superintendent, and have materials or information provided to board members, which may be of value in consideration of the proposed adjustment to board bylaws." And that was a better reflection of the process that takes place, rather than it initially said the president would distribute those materials. Instead, it better reflects the process that takes place. Finally, in the last paragraph, in addition to the formal adoption of bylaws, we added the word "or deletion." So it would say, "The formal adoption or deletion of bylaws shall be recorded in the minutes of the Board of Education," and that is really so that in the future, when we are all old and gray, that we have a record of not only the changes, modifications, or additions of policies, but we also have, when a policy is deleted or incorporated into another, we have a clear record of that.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board on this policy? All righty. Seeing none, we will put this on the agenda then for the December, is it?
Sixteenth?
Fourteenth meeting, the December 14th meeting, for a vote. I'll start with that?
Mm-hmm.
All righty. The next item on our agenda is Item 8E, First Reading of Board Policy, BD2, Formulation of Policies. And again, we are not needing a motion, because we will not vote on it tonight, but Mrs. Oakley, would you like to address this item?
Yes. Again, this just reflects the same line of thinking with regard to this particular bylaw. So we added the words recommendation, recommend, deletion of a policy. We added the word deleted twice, and so really, again, what we are clearly stating is the process for not only making changes to a current policy or proposing a new policy, but also the process for deleting a policy from our records.
All righty. Thank you. Are there any questions on this policy change?
I do, President Burton?
Mrs. McDonald?
Just to kind of get a clarification on this, especially this one in, in the bylaw that we just discussed. If we deleted the policy that we already voted on, how, could we have done that without having this taken place first? Or am I confused?
We, we can, we can, since we did not have any formal process in place for deleting a, a policy, we were within our rights to go ahead and delete that policy. It came to our attention, when we were in that process, that we probably ought to have a written process for that, even though it's taken place over the years, as, as policies have become obsolete, or have been changed by state law to the point that they're no longer effective, or they're incorporated into something else. We've been taking care of it in that manner, but when something is deleted entirely, we're, we, we, it came to our attention that we didn't have anything in writing saying exactly how we delete a policy, and that's why we are writing it, so that there, so that there's clarity. We were not in any violation before, because we didn't have anything written on, written down on how we were going to do it. We're just writing it down, so it's clear.
Okay.
So we were, we were okay in, in our deleting of, of policy just a few minutes ago.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions or comments on this, on this policy change?
No?
All righty. This will go on our agenda then for December 14th, for a vote. And the next item is Item 8F, First Reading of Board Policy, BDA, Policy Development System. Again, we do not need a motion, but Mrs. Oakley, would you like to address this item?
Yes, we have one phrase that we're adding to the second paragraph, and so I will just read that section. "This, this system is a general guideline for such tasks as policy research, the drafting of preliminary policy proposals, reviewing policy drafts with concerned groups, presenting new and revised policies to the board for consideration and action." And we added the words "policy dissolution," and then we continue on with the current, current bylaw, "policy dissemination, policy evaluation, and the maintenance of a continuous and easy-to-use policy manual." And so, again, the only phrase that we added in there was "policy dissolution" to further, just clarify the process when we are deleting a policy.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Nope.
All righty. Likewise, we will put this on the December 14th agenda for a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 9A, Approval of Teachers. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. McDonald?
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and offer employment for the 2015-16 school year to the teachers listed on the attached document.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. And Mr. Winry, would you like to address this item for us?
I'd like to add that we went through our selection process, and we believe these teachers to be the most qualified teachers available, and we recommend that the Board of Education approve their employment.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
No?
We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you please take the role?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and congratulations to our newly hired teachers. Wonderful we get to do that. The next item on our agenda is 9B, Retirements. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Laura?
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for the services rendered by Scott Fuller, Francine Nowinski.
Support.
Was that Mrs. McDonald supporting?
Yes, it was.
Miss, uh, we have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mrs. McDonald, and Mr. Winry, would you like to address this item?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to note that Ms. I'd like to note that Ms. Nowzinski had over eighteen years of service, and in particular, Mr. Fuller had over thirty-five years of service to the district. Very, very commendable. On behalf of the staff and administration, I'd like to thank these staff members for their loyal and dedicated service, and would recommend that the Board adopt the resolutions of appreciation.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the Board of Education?
Congratulations.
Teacher's retirement.
Yeah.
Yes. Congratulations, and thank you so much. We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonfield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonfield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 9C, Approval of Settlement Agreement for Wage Reopener with the Supervisory Employees Association, Livonia Schools, SEALS/MEA. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the terms of the tentative agreement reached with the Supervisory Employees Association, Livonia Schools, to amend the collective bargaining agreement between the parties effective July 1, 2015.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by a chorus, but I will, I believe I heard first Mr. Johnson. Mr. Winry, would you like to address this item, please?
Yes, thank you. The Board, through its designated representative, in this case, that's the Director of Human Resources, has met with the supervisory's unit in pursuit to wage reopener for the 15-16 school year. This would be the third year of a three-year agreement. Sole issue bargained was wages. A tentative agreement has been reached between the parties, which calls for the wage schedule to remain unchanged, reflecting a salary freeze for the 15-16 school year, and staff recommends that the Board approve the tentative agreement, leaving it to be fair and consistent with the settlement guidelines previously established by the Board. I'd like to add that this agreement is consistent with settlements that the Board has already approved for several other bargaining units. And I'd also like to mention that Representative from SEALS, and that would be the Uniserve Director for the MEA, Cheryl Ann Robinson, is here tonight as well.
Hello? You got your shout-out tonight. Thank you, no, thank you for being here this evening. Are there any questions or comments by members of the Board of Education? No? All right. We have a motion from Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Bonfield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonfield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Winry and Mrs. Robinson, would you like to approach the podium? Thank you so much, and thank you to all of our employees and our employee groups that work so diligently. It has not been an easy several years in education, and please know that even though finances are in such a state that we have not seen them in decades, our appreciation is enormous for the job that all of our employees do for our school district. We thank you. The next item on our agenda is hearing from Board Members, and as is customary for our Board of Education, rather than having seven folks repeat one another for quite some time, we have established the tradition of having one Board Member give a lot of thank yous to several of our honorees of the evening. By all means, if anybody else would like to add anything, they're certainly welcome to. This evening, Mrs. McDonald will be giving our thanks on behalf of the Board of Education. Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you, President Burton. First of all, I am honored to do this this evening. I think it's such a joy for the Board Members to be able to express ourselves in this manner, and I appreciate the opportunity to do that this evening. First off, I'd like to congratulate all our Franklin Art Students and their teacher, Jeremy Rowe, for bringing us such beautiful art pieces to the Board and to share with our community. And those students are Matthew Bardell, Casey Bernhardt, Lauren Borges, Abby Jenkins, and Natalie Trussello. So congratulations, and then thank you for sharing your artistic abilities with the Board and this community. Secondly, a big thank you to ProCam Livonia Business for donating nine color printers in a donation amount of $9,991. It is very appreciated by the school district, and it's such a wonderful thing for a member of our community, as a businessman, to support our schools the way that George did. And I'm sorry, I don't know his last name, but...
Hadad. George Hadad.
Hadad. Thank you so much for your kind donation. It's very much appreciated. Thirdly, American Education Week. You know, I don't think, I think we all take for granted that when we send our kids off to schools, and even ourselves when we were young, how much education really, truly plays a big factor in our life. And I think our school district supports this community in such a way that some of us just don't really know and appreciate. So I think in our resolution this evening, I think probably the strongest point that was read by Mr. Johnson today, where it says, "Whereas schools unite entire communities, bring together adults, children, and children, educators, and volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials in common purpose." And I think if we all focus on that, I think our district and our community and our country will benefit from keeping focused on what's truly important, and to move our country forward is to make sure that all kids are educated. So ninety-fourth year in observance, I think that says a lot, and it's a wonderful thing. Trying to review my notes here. Like to welcome Alicia Bathwadi and Jeffrey Varga as our new teachers. Welcome. We hope this is a long and career for you here, and enjoy your beginnings. And congratulations, and much appreciation to Scott Fuller and Francine Nowzinski. You know, I hope you enjoy your retirement, and thank you for your many years of service to Livonia Public Schools. And the approval of Sedman to the SEALS group, thank you so much. I know it's hard not to be able to get any raises, but thank you for doing that, all that you do for our community and our school district. It's, you know, it's much appreciated, and thank you so much. I was going to mention about the Franklin High School football team, but Mrs. Okus did it, but I'm going to mention it anyway.
Go Patriots!
Go Patriots. I know we can do it, and, you know, just keep the focus and bring home that prize. And also to our girls volleyball team, good luck tomorrow, the Churchill volleyball team. And I'm not sure if there's anyone else, but we love our school district, and it's a great place to be. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McDonald. Would any other Board Member like to add anything? Mrs. Jarvis, and then Mrs. Bonfield?
Thank you. I would like to congratulate the Lady Warriors, our Girls Robotics Team. They sent a group of all females to the competition this weekend. It was the All Girls Robotics Competition in Bloomfield. Thirty-two robots competed, and the Livonia Lady Warriors won.
Congratulations.
So we're very pleased.
Congratulations.
And a reminder to teachers out there that green meat is filling up their schedule for field trips for the spring. They're also budgeting for their grants for transportation, and they hope that you will hurry and get your requests in before that process ends.
Thank you. Mrs. Bonfield, and then Mr. Centers?
I just want to thank Anne Owen, the principal over at Emerson School. She is a member of our Livonia AM Rotary Club, and she invited our group to come in and spend our morning meeting with her last Wednesday, and a group of her leadership students. The Livonia AM and Livonia Hearts and Hands, and just a couple other people who have their hands in the pot, helped to provide a food pantry over at Emerson to some of our more high-risk families. And we enjoyed an outstanding breakfast that was provided by the staff and the students, who we meet at 7:30 in the morning, were up and bright-eyed and bushy-tailed helping us out with our breakfast. But just, an outstanding group of kids, just another example of how wonderful our students are. We also had, were able to take a tour of the Emerson facility, which is one of our newly updated facilities, and most of the individuals in our Rotary Group have not been in a public school in quite some time, and were thoroughly impressed and enthusiastic. We got to visit some classrooms, and we were in on an announcement by one of the teachers that Emerson is getting a 3D printer over there, which we were like, I'm like, oh yay! And everybody's like, she's weird. But it was really exciting news, and we were there when, you know, the teacher, Anne sort of prompted the teacher to kind of give away the little surprise to the kids, and they kind of knew it was coming. But again, a fascinating class. They have clay models, and you can't imagine, well, you can, but the things that these kids are doing. We were also, you can't tell I'm excited about this, they were, the physics class was bouncing balls, and the teacher was telling us about how your brain connects to both sides, and going on about all these terms, and it was just, it was really amazing. It was supposed to be like a fifteen, twenty-minute tour, and I think it wound up to be like forty-five minutes by the time we got done, because there was just, there was so much to see and so much to talk about. And they also, in one of the wings, have one of our, the Mo-Kai Center over there, and really, Mrs. Owen was so proud to show that off and talk to us about it, and show us the new facilities, and the special rooms that the teachers were able to put together, and have a say in how they were put together, and much more permanence than they had in the past. Extra storage, and there's a whole lot of stuff there. So little benches in the hallway and stuff, but I just, it just, it was really nice. And it was just a really nice day, and as an example, I think all of our buildings are like that. And it was just, it was fantastic for me to be able to take my group into the setting and not only be a member of the Rotary Club, but also, you know, tied in as a school board member. And just the point of pride of being able to sort of show off our district to some of our community members. And so it was just, it was a fantastic morning. We really had a great time.
Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you. Mr. Centers, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, just one quick thing. I think this is the first regular meeting since we were hosted by Mr. Bill Green at Coolidge. That is, that's correct, okay. The, Roosevelt. Roosevelt. And it was really neat to see, we've seen the buildings kind of when they're in the fishing stages of construction, and then, you know, when they're brand-new, about to get moved into. It's nice to see it being lived in a little bit. See, you get to see teachers using the technology. The new preschool program at Roosevelt was very impressive. The, just the way the teachers are making that just a very comfortable environment for students, you could see. So thank you to Mr. Green, who gave a very extensive tour and took a lot of time out of his evening, so.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson and Mrs. Laura, do you have anything to add this evening? No? All righty. As you can tell, there's a lot to celebrate in our district. There are a few points I'd like to, shout-outs I'd like to give. We were notified by Mrs. Okus recently that our bus fleet had a 100% pass rate for safety inspections. The Michigan State Police have sent a special certificate acknowledging this, and there's going to be an acknowledgement in the bus garage with all of our transportation folks, and we thank everyone in that department. That is, that is one of our thankless, tireless jobs done in our district, but if it's not done properly, the ramifications are huge. But we are so very proud of our Transportation Department in accomplishing this major goal. By virtue of the fact that the Michigan State Police are acknowledging it, tells you how difficult it is to achieve this goal. And we are really proud of our Transportation Department and thank them so much for their efforts. We'd like to thank the Churchill teachers who have joined us this evening. It's wonderful to have Board support, to have folks come out and try to learn from one another. We try to get into the schools as much as possible, and it's very, it's thrilling for us when other folks in the district from other walks of their daily life come and learn more about what's going on at the Board level. I truly believe that it is when all of us, no matter what our job is in the district, work together, that we can accomplish as much as we possibly can for our students. But we thank you very much for coming out this evening and joining us. As you can tell, there's a whole lot of news that we were able to share, give shout-outs to lots of different groups, lots of different accomplishments. And I encourage you to send your accomplishments our way. If you could send them via Mrs. Wozniak or Mrs. Okus, the Board would love to hear about it. The Board would love to take the opportunity to share your accomplishments and your students' accomplishments with the whole district at a Board meeting. We get our hands on as many of those exciting pieces of news as possible, but by all means, keep sending them our way, because we'd love to share them with everybody. We have come to the end of our agenda for this evening. We wish you a nice evening and a nice rest of your week. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and we are adjourned. Have a nice evening. Good night.